All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I want to thank the folks at BCTV for operating this call for us tonight, and I'd like to thank Rick Zaymore for moderating this evening's discussion. So, folks, we're all gathered here to obtain information that will help each of us, all the voters in Guilford, as they reconsider the vote on Article 7. I'd like to just say very briefly, so we're all clearly on the same page, a little tiny bit of how we got here. This article that we're going to be talking about this evening was on the ballot on March 1st. That it was narrowly passed by 15 votes, many of you may know. A petition to reconsider that vote was submitted by about 150 Guilfordites. The Select Board accepted that petition and set a date for a second vote for the same article. And that vote is on Tuesday, March 24th, from 10:00 to 7:00 at the town offices. You can vote either at the town office on the day, or you can request an absentee ballot ahead of that. The agenda for tonight's meeting will include a presentation from the Library Board, and then we'll move directly to question and answer, and Rick will be moderating all of that for us. And I just want to say that because the conversation in the community has been spirited about this topic, go Guilford, this meeting is designed to provide information specifically about the article itself. It will not be a debate about the pros and cons of the article, nor will it be an opportunity for voters to explain why they are voting one way or the other. We want to stay focused on the article itself and give everyone on the call a chance to get as much information as they possibly can so we all make the best possible choices we feel that we want to make. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rick, who'll explain a few technical issues, and then we'll begin the call. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Zon. Yeah, I'm Rick Zaymore, moderator, Ashworth Road. Couple things. First of all, if your full name is not shown on your screen, maybe you can change it by going into the three dots on the upper right-hand side and change name. And we'd like to have your full name, if possible, so we know who's here and who's got their hand raised. If you would like to speak or ask a question, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen, and raise your hand, and then that puts you in a queue that is automatic and based on who raised their hand first, and I will call on you. I'm not going to call on anybody a second time until other people have had a chance to speak. If you want a follow-up question, you'll have to wait. So phrase your questions the best way you can to get the information you want. This will be a civil meeting, we're all neighbors, and let's be polite and respectful to everyone speaking. Let's see, as Zon said, we're going to have a presentation from the Library Board. The chat feature is turned off. And yeah, and use the raise hand feature. And I think with that, we are ready to start. Thank you. So Laura, do you want to start your presentation?
Thank you, thank you, Rick. Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Laura Lawson Tucker, and I'm the co-chair of the Guilford Free Library Trustees, along with Judith Serkin, the other co-chair and fellow trustees Sandra Cortez, Nika Fotopoulos, John Shaw, Jeanette Tokars, and Richard Wazansky. All trustees are elected officials of the town. The Friends of the Library is a nonprofit organization that we work very closely with, and they were created several years ago to help support the library. So there are eight members of that Friends group. And I'll just introduce you to the chair, Amber Hunt. And the reason for that is that the Friends will be overseeing the Capitol Campaign of this project if it passes. So the library's presentation tonight is really the story. It's the story of our town's public library and the important resources that are available to all at the library and the need for more space at the library today and for the future. So now I'm going to work with Nolan, and we're going to have a slideshow. There's our first one. And there's the beautiful crabapple tree by the library. And the whole presentation is about the need for more space. So yes, Nolan, let's go to the next slide. And now just bear with me for a minute because I have to coordinate my screen so I can see the slides that Nolan is showing. Okay, so Nolan, if you go to the second slide, thank you. So it's pretty amazing to realize that our library's been here since 1891 and is really one of the oldest continually operating libraries in Vermont. So history. The history about this project is really the express need for space that's been happening since 2011, when a group of folks got together and identified that from surveying the town. And we've had subsequent surveys. And time and time again, many townspeople have said, you know, we love the library, but it just really needs more space. So to that end, in 2019, we pursued the idea of expanding the library. Next slide, Nolan. So Guilford Free Library is open and available to all and provides access to such a wide range of resources, as you can see listed there. Okay, next slide. And what's very important to note is that between 2011, 2019, there's been a great increase of patron usage and circulation of resources. Next slide. But what's become really apparent to us is that we are so limited in our space. The space is really inadequate for meeting the current needs of library patrons. I just want to point out a couple issues with lack of space. So probably most importantly, there's no way wheelchairs could, or a wheelchair could navigate the interior space, and let alone get inside, even though there is a ramp. It's very difficult to get even into the library building. Another big issue with the library right now is that there's no quiet area for any research, for working on projects, for studying. And there's room for one comfortable chair for an adult. Okay, next slide. And so the issue with wheelchairs is, you know, we are not meeting the law, the ADA Law, Americans with Disabilities Act. So therefore, we are not accessible in accordance with that law. And this is just a photo with the snowshoes that we loaned out and showing you, like, there's just not enough room for a wheelchair at all. Next slide. So it's just very interesting, this visual showing how little our library actually is compared to other libraries in our state from towns of the same size as ours. And that's quite significant, that difference. .40 square footage per capita for us and 1.57 square footage per capita is the average in our state. So you can see we're significantly small. Okay, next slide. So now what I want to show you, and they're just great visuals, and I do want to note that Leslie Malouin, who is also a town auditor, was the designer of this really beautiful PowerPoint. And so thank you, Leslie. So we'll go fairly quickly here. This is to give you visual of, granted with our little space, what the resources are today and what we're hoping to build upon. So books, we have lots of books and access to interlibrary loan. Next slide. Summer camps, great use of the outdoors, quite a challenge in the summer when there's bad weather. Guilford Gazette, and there's a folding party. Everyone received their Gazette recently. That is a town, I'm sorry, that's a library project, part of the town, of course. Shows you how cramped that is. Continue. Storytime. And you'll see the inset there. This is showing how Storytime is on hybrid so we can have folks attend online as well as in person. And we're quite limited with space. Next slide. And one thing that the library is very strong with is outreach to elders and to the school, to Guilford School. So we have strong partnerships. Next slide. And there's Storytime again. And we have 24/7 Wi-Fi, which is quite wonderful for people who don't have that at home. Next slide. Workshops. Here's a knitting workshop. And then we have had a series of storytelling workshops for, or performances, actually, backroad stories at the Broadbrook Community Center. Next slide. Passes, passes to parks, equipment loans. This is the Halloween celebration, outdoor Halloween celebration. We wouldn't fit in the library with our Halloween celebration. Next slide. And this organizes all the resources in four different categories. It just shows just how dynamic our programming and resources are. Services, equipment, programs, and information. Next slide. So that brings us to this project. So we have all these great resources, but actually, we're really hampered and challenged to provide them to our current patrons, let alone the future. You just have to point out, if you go back, Nolan, it's great to notice, if it works, to go back. Yeah, I want to show the picture again of the patron in a little teeny-weeny chair. Let's see, you'll go forward. I'm sorry. Gummed up the works here. Yeah, keep going. Okay, we'll keep, there it is. Okay, well, anyway, you saw it briefly. So here's our vision. Our vision for the future is that this wonderful place of learning that we are, sharing in creativity, let's help make our library inclusive. So inclusive for all ages, inclusive for folks who have mobility challenges, inclusive for parents with baby buggies, strollers, inclusive for folks who need to use a walker. And at the same time, expand it so it's comfortable. Expand it so we can fit groups into the building. Expand it so that we can truly meet the needs of our patrons, and we're having a really hard time doing that. And part of our vision is try out some new experiences because we'll have the space to do it, as well as some favorite activities. Next slide. So with this vision is the hope that we can meet the needs of different age groups. Right now, probably most people know we serve families, lots of families, children of all ages. We're quite challenged with meeting schoolagers. We have had after-school programming, but really needed to meet outside. And that would be a great resource for the school and for families. We would love to better meet the needs of college students or even adults in continuing remote classes. We'd love to be a place where folks have a consulting business, a business, and they don't have proper internet at home. We'd love to better meet those needs. We'd love to offer the leisure and enjoyment kinds of activities for all ages. And of course, I've mentioned already the handicapped, folks who are handicapped. That's a real vision of ours. Next slide. So here's a drawing. And this drawing shows us what is familiar to us on the left, the current building, and what's proposed for the new building to be connected with the old building. And as you can see, the library currently is on a hill. So that's one of the challenges of this project. And it does require having a second floor to expand the space, which requires having an elevator. We're very excited by this idea of on the bottom floor, you can see those bottom three windows, will be a room that will be available to other groups, other groups who are looking to gather, and it would be available when the library is closed and would have its own entries. That's a really great new resource. The other piece which we're very happy about is we'd like to have more than one comfortable chair for an adult to sit and to read and to study. And we'd like a quiet, separate study space or research space or a space to have medical appointments online for folks who don't have proper internet at home or don't have quiet space at home. So all of that excites us. Next slide. So there's the question, what about utilities? What is that going to mean? And so here's some estimations, and that's just what they are, estimations. One thing that we will be eliminating propane, and we'll be having a heat pump. And the septic, currently it's a 1,000-gallon tank, and it does need to get pumped, and each time $240. And if in time we have enough more people using the library, then yes, we'd have a larger gallon tank put in. And yes, that would increase that, but as you can see, I don't think it would be a significant increase. Currently, and we plan to maintain it, all of our landscaping for years, like more than 30 years, has all been done by volunteers, and we plan to continue that. And we're very excited to modernize our use of energy. And the whole building will be much more energy efficient. Next slide. So this is important piece of information, which is, there's been a lot of questions about. And this is the town's capital budget. And the town's capital budget, the purpose to it is to support the town's assets. So you can see charted right there. It's heavy road equipment, culverts, the library, bridges. Yeah, it's a little bit mushed up there. I'm not sure what happened, and I apologize about that. There's the town garage, Historical Society, and way up there in the writing, sorry about that, is the town office. So you can see that the capital budget, the purpose to it is for the town to maintain the town's assets. And as you can see, you know, a high percentage, 52%, is for the heavy equipment, for the roads. And isn't that important? And important for all of us so we can get around? And culverts, and bridges, and the town garage. And you can see the library is 10% of that. And the library is an asset of the town and is meant to provide resources for everybody. Next slide. So finances. So, yes, so the project total cost, more than $1 million. Yes, it's a little bit like, ah! But at the same time, we have plans. And we have plans to meet what it will cost beyond what we're asking right now in this article from you to be considering, which are the two sources of funds, which are going to come up in a slide. Once the project design is finalized, which it isn't, and that would be, we're estimating if this passes, January 2023, then all constructive work, construction work will be put out for bids. And construction will not begin until all finances are secured. And there will be no coming back to the town for more money. Next slide. So here are the two requests that are in the article. Everyone's familiar with it, I'm thinking. The first is a reallocation, asking for your request, this is what you are voting on, is this fund, $195,000, that was originally raised by taxes to be utilized for the Algiers Water District project. So it's a request to reallocate that money for this town project, I mean, the town library. And then the second fund is asking for your approval, taxpayers, voters, for a new bond and a bond not to exceed $205,000, to be financed over a period not to exceed 30 years. So that's what you're voting on right there. Okay, next slide. And this is what's been calculated to be impact on each Guilford taxpayer. These are estimations based on the 2021 grand list. So you can see it's all charted out there. So for example, if your house, your property is valued at about $200,000, this project would increase your taxes $1 per year. And you can see the rest. Next slide. So these funds are in place. We've talked about the capital improvement fund. And this amount of money, $323, has already been earmarked, put aside for the library. Next slide. These funds are in place. Downtown tax credits, it's a grant, was received. And this grant paid for the feasibility study, which helped us really pursue, is this even a possible project? Next slide. Some individuals have been so generous and over the last few years have left money bequest to the library. And so $140,000 in total has been given to the library for improvements to the library. Next slide. These are funds yet to be raised. So this we're calling our capital fundraising campaign. And if this article is approved, the Friends and the trustees would work very hard and raise these funds. There's already been some research happening around grants for ADA accessibility and grants for libraries, grants that have been identified that we would be a good match for. The project will not begin until all funding is secured. And all costs we will raise beyond what you are voting on. Next slide. And there've been questions about, what about local? You know, what about hiring local woodworkers, builders, suppliers? And absolutely, the town, if this is approved, the town will put out the request for projects three and look at competitive pricing. This will ensure competitive pricing. So it'll be requests for bids. And I think looking at local contractors will be a high priority for the town to look at, for the Select Board. Next slide. There you go. So thank you so much for your time and for your consideration. And now I think we will start the question and answer period, and I'll pass it back to Rick.
Okay, Nolan, I'm not able to see anyone's hand raised. Maybe you need to make me a host. Okay, Jen McDuffie. Jen, before I call on you, a couple things. As I hear each question or comment, I will refer it either to the Select Board or to the Library Trustees. Jen, you're up.
First of all, hi, my name's Jen McDuffie. I will start my video. I'm happy to do that. So a lot of you don't know me. I'm a new resident to Guilford. I moved here from Durham, North Carolina, and I am actually joining this meeting from Durham, North Carolina because I care about this issue so much. I'm in Durham, they're having their primary. There's a very important Senate race going on. I came down here to work on that, and I'm joining this Zoom because this topic is so important, and I'm just making a comment. I think the expansion of the library is pivotal for the town of Guilford if it wants to continue to grow, if it wants to attract young families, if it wants to attract businesses. Right now, there is very little public space whatsoever. The idea that there's going to be a pretty meeting room that people can use for free, I just think the town needs it so much. And they will have much larger stacks. You won't have to wait for Cathy and the librarians to get things from Brattleboro for us. And so I'm going to jump off because I'm in North Carolina. I'm trying to visit friends down here, and I hope it impacts someone to think about, gosh, this is public space that we can use. The chat, the town has next to none of that. And I cared enough to zoom in all the way from Carolina. So thank you for listening. I hope the rest of the meeting goes really well.
Okay, Dan Calley.
Thank you. So Dan Calley, East Mountain Road. Thank you, Laura, for the great presentation showing the services the library offers to the community. According to Vermont Library Statistics website and workbook, it shows Guilford receiving approximately $2,900 in grant dollars last year. So I guess, I'm just wondering if there's any more detail on what the plan is to drastically increase that volume of grants and the volume of local fundraising to address the 280K slated for this project as well as potential growing operating costs in the future. You know, you mentioned that if grants and local fundraising objectives aren't met, that the project wouldn't start. Is there a deadline when that funding must be secured by? And then just with the library now being the third largest part of the capital budget for the town of Guilford, you know, would there be any other parts of this project where the town would be asked for additional expenditures toward the project? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. Right now, if this passes, we'll begin getting the Capitol Campaign organized. And what I'd like to do, Dan, is turn to Amber, who's the chair of the Friends group, along with Jeanette, who's a trustee, to answer the question about the Capitol Campaign. Thanks, Dan, for your question.
Yeah, is Amber going to answer the question?
Yes, Amber and Jeanette together.
Okay, Amber, sure, go ahead.
Hi. All right, am I on?
You are.
Okay, great. Sorry if you can hear the sound machine. Got a sleeping baby just right over there. Thank you for that question. We haven't started local fundraising yet. As you know, that will begin once, if Article 7 is approved. And I think you're asking if that amount seems like it's too much. And so far in our research, it doesn't seem like $73,000 is a really, really huge Capitol campaign compared to what other folks are doing. And then also, very positively, when it comes to grants available, Sarah Coffey, our representative, has been in touch with us about some additional ones in addition to the ADA accessibility that will be available, some that are from their education fund that's available annually that we might apply for. And then also some that are, some new funds that may be available because of, I'm trying to look at my notes here, COVID-related funds, so ARPA funds that may be a perfect match for us. Those haven't come up and haven't been approved quite yet. I hope I can say that, Sarah, sorry. But if she wants any clarification, she's really been a great contact for us. So I think we're going to have a lot of success, and we're really excited about it. We do know that a lot of people are very, very excited about this, so we've gotten a lot of positive reactions already. Does that answer the question okay, Laura?
I think so. And Dan, I know that you were asking about what if? You know, what if grants don't come through? And the trustees and the Friends are committed to finding the funding. And that's our focus, that's our dedication to the project. So I hope that answers your questions, Dan.
Yeah, can I just add one more thing? Is that we also, the trustees and the Friends have a lot of other folks that are looking out for us too and pointing us in the right direction with this. So just a thank you.
Okay, before I call on Sarah, Dan also asked if there's a deadline by which time funding has to be secured.
We have not set a deadline, no.
Okay, so Sarah.
So hi, everyone. Since I heard Amber speak up about the grants, and Dan, to answer your question, I just wanted to give some more specificity about a new resource that's going to be available to all libraries in Vermont. Through the federal ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, one bucket of funding that was made available to the state of Vermont, we had $113 million specifically allocated for capital projects. And this was within my committee, I was said on the House Institutions and Corrections Committee. And the use of these dollars came through my committee. And I'm really pleased to report that the budget is on its way to the governor's desk, and we anticipate that he will not be beton-ing the budget. But if the House and Senate agreed, we have a little over 15... we have a little over $15 million available for, that will be available for libraries. The purpose of the, the, the capital program is specifically for rural and underserved communities. And libraries were a pre-approved category because it was about expanding people's access to broadband and high-speed internet. And in rural communities across America, libraries are, like our library, is an important center of community where people can have access. And it's just really interesting that the library is planning, the library's proposed plan to improve ADA accessibility and rooms where people could have a telehealth appointment or a job interview or, or do an online class is exactly the kinds of projects that would, that the purpose for this, the capital ARPA dollars were for. So, and I think the grants are going to be quite substantive. I think they'll be, the program is going to be stood up later this fall. But they'll be quite substantive sized grants, like between, I imagine, 40 and $100,000. So I just wanted to give some information to that. And I think our, the library, our library will be very well positioned to get that money. And the money has, there's a little bit of time. The money doesn't need to be spent or until 2026 to give communities some flexibility. So I just wanted to add that clarification, Rick.
Thank you. Richard.
Yeah, I wanted to add that we've done, we've done a preliminary foundation prospect list of local foundations that we believe.
Excuse me, somebody needs to mute themselves. We're hearing some background noise.
ARPA dollars were for, so, and I think the grants are going to be quite substantive. I think they'll be.
Thank you.
I just, I'll say, start it again. We've done a preliminary foundation, a private foundation prospect list, which is quite extensive and compatible with building libraries in small towns. And of course, that library trustees, the friends of the library would be sending out proposals to those foundations. So there would be an expected good amount from private foundations, both local and in Vermont and possibly even nationally. So that, that preliminary foundation prospect list has been prepared.
Okay, do we have another question or comment? Anne Zimmerman.
Hi.
Hi.
You've got, you've got us coming in in two places.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm actually at the library right now. And that was because I couldn't access the link from home. And then I did. And so here I am on my phone also because I, I wanted my name so I could be called on. I think it's kind of ironic that here I am using the library to be at this meeting, so speaking to the importance of libraries when we need them. But my question has to do with, you know, sort of improving the energy efficiency of buildings. And I think, you know, the direction that towns and municipalities are trying to head in is to be, you know, off of fossil fuels as much as possible. And, you know, there's an energy systems upgrade planned in this. And could somebody speak to the, like, sort of new building versus old building issues involved in upgrading energy systems or potentially, you know, say installing solar in the future? If, if that is desired by the town as a way to supply electricity? I know there's issues with historic buildings and what you can and can't do with them. And I will mute myself now.
Thanks, Anne. I'm wondering, Isaac, who's the consultant on the project and has been very involved, of course, with the design, probably is the best person to answer that question. Is Isaac here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. You up for that, Isaac?
Yes, I am. Give me a second to get organized. Yeah. Well, first of all, the, the library's been very well taken care of. You know, it's got basement insulation, it's got, you know, it's, it's in, it's in good shape physically. And it's been weatherized, so it's, it's, it's pretty tight from, from installation standpoint, insulation, air sealing standpoint. What we, so we have very little work on the existing library proposed. But what we are going to do is change the mechanical system. So we'll move away from the propane heater and we'll heat and cool the entire place with, with an air source heat pump. So that gets us off of propane and we're not on oil as it stands anyway. So, so, so that's an advantage. The, the new building will be built to a much more modern energy code than the 1891 library was. So, you know, we'll, we'll be fully air sealed. And we have a pretty detailed wall spec for windows and walls and doors for how that, how that building is going to, going to manage itself. So the, the whole thing will be on, on electric heat and electric cooling. And the orientation of both the building, the new building, the new addition and the old building is such that it lends itself well to solar, solar voltages presumably. Those are not included in our cost estimate right now. But it is something that could be added in the future. So that's a nutshell. I mean, I could go on, but that's, that's a nutshell. I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, Sarah Rosso.
Hi, technical difficulties. I am trying to put a, put a tired kid to bed. So I'm, I've been in and out and I might be a little distracted. But I just wanted to say a couple of quick things, which is basically that as a parent of a young child in Guilford, I am very grateful for the library and the services that it provides. And we, we benefit from so many of the programs and activities offered by the library. And the, the summer camp is wonderful. That we, when my daughter was little, we went to Storytime. We get books from the library regularly. And oftentimes, it's a matter of asking Kathy to get books from other libraries from, for us because the, the collection is small. But we just are so grateful for the library. And that most of the activities and programs that we have attended there are, are crowded. And the indoor space is, is, is just not sufficient. And so I'm really excited about the potential for this, this project to happen. And the more I learn about it, the more it seems like a really well thought out plan, both in terms of the design and the funding. And I'm really grateful to the, the friends and the trustees for putting so much effort into this, this project. And I, I'm just really, really grateful for the resource and really excited about the, the potential for our library to be even better than it is. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, do we have another question or comment? I don't see any hands.
Do you mind if I just say something?
Sure, yeah. Okay, Taylor.
Hi, I'm Taylor Franklin. I just want to say that it's, I have four kiddos that are little and then two big kiddos. And I think it really speaks that I'll pick up my kiddos from Guilford School. And we will drive to the Brattleboro Library because just seven of us in there is really just overwhelming and a lot. And it makes me really sad, but there's more space for us in Brattleboro. And it just suits my family better. And it's not overwhelming. And with the seven of us in there, there's really no room for other people. And I feel guilty. So we just feel more comfortable in Brattleboro. And it makes me so sad because we're right there, right after school, get the kids and then drive. What is it, like seven miles to the library in Brattleboro? Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Tammy Sargent.
Sorry, it took me a second to figure out how to do that. So my question is, it keeps saying that this project is only going to cost us what's on the Article VII, what we're voting on, when in fact, it's going to cost us taxpayers closer to $1 million, if I'm doing the math correctly. But my, my other question is, in the vote itself, the wording says that this is subject to available grants in aid. So what does that mean? Does that mean we're not going to try to get this bond if the vote passes? Do we not do this $205,000 bond and we don't transfer the $195,000? I'm curious what the subject to available grants and aid, what that's, what that's implying.
I'm wondering, Tammy, are you referring to the need for the capital campaign and the grants that we'll be pursuing? The capital campaign that the trustees and friends, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm referring to the actual Article VII.
Okay, to the actual Article VII. Yeah, so then, Rick, let's have someone from the town, one of the select board, speak to that.
Sure.
I'm not sure. It might be Sheila is what I'm thinking.
Sheila, are you available?
Yeah, but I wonder, do you want me to try or do you want?
Please, please go ahead. I'm not, I'm actually not sure that I understand Tammy's question entirely.
Okay, so I think Tammy is saying two things. One is if we don't get all the, if the, if the town, if the vote doesn't, if the vote goes through, but the library doesn't secure all of the funding except the $205,000 proposed bond and the $195,000 already unused available funds, will the project go ahead? That's, Tammy, am I correct?
Sorry, trying to get myself unmuted. It's, it's the wording on the, on the vote itself, the way it's worded, subject to available grants and aid. It's saying, should we borrow this money? And should we, you know, transfer, well, actually, that comes after transferring the 195. But it's about the $205,000 to be financed. And at the end of that, it says, subject to available grants and aid.
Oh, I think, okay.
You want me to stop? Okay.
No, no. No, no, no. Zon or John, who, who wants to take that?
Go ahead, John. I think I have the answer, but go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to jump in and say that my understanding of the available grants and aid is that, that the town, you're voting, we're voting for the town to borrow the $205,000 if the town can find that fund. The subject to available grants and aids means there needs to be a program that has that fund available. And if there isn't, then the town is not required to look elsewhere.
Right.
That's my understanding, but, but I'll pass it to Zon.
All right, I thank you, John. I think I understand that as well. And also, another point that I understand, Tammy, is that it says up to $205,000 so that if there were other grants and dollars available that could be applied, we might not need to seek a bond of $205,000, but might be able to get a bond that's lower than that.
So it wouldn't be higher, it would only be lower?
Correct. That's, we're voting on up to $205,000 and that would be the maximum.
Right, that's not, it's not the way it was worded. If it was worded like that, it would have been straightforward. The fact that it's worded, subject to available grants and aid, is kind of a gray area. It's kind of like you could take that in more than one way.
I understand what you, I think I understand what you're saying, yes. But I think if I understand correctly, the understanding is that there would be, it would not exceed $205,000 and might in fact be lower depending on what the fundraising is, the fundraising capacity as it goes forward.
All right, here's a quick question for me. Is there any, it sounds like there's, might be some issue about whether or not the town can, can secure a bond? Is that, is that a factor or not?
This is Johnny, and I don't think that that is a factor. I think that is just legal language that gets put in. That, that would be in, in, any article that was asking for a bond would have that legal language in it.
Okay. All right, Steve Lenkey or Linda?
Hi, it's Steve. I just want to sort of point out the obvious. We're not trying to build a new library. We're not trying to build a parking garage or something from the ground up. I think it's important to, to recognize that if we don't go forward with this for the 205 or the 195 and the 205, we're still going to have a library that's going to cost the town money. It's still going to be a library that's going to be part of the capital funding. It's still going to be a library that we have to use sort of old propane heating with and, and have energy efficiencies. It's still going to be a library that's not ADA compliant, unless somebody wants to say, okay, we're not going to get a new library, so we're going to bulldoze the old one down. I think it, people should just recognize that there will be existing costs with or without the expansion project. So, and those costs are not, you know, small in and of, in and of themselves.
Okay, Jason Heron.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was having some technical issues, but, so I just have a little thing I'd like to, to, to read. It says, I just want to say that the story of how Guilford's library came into existence is worth sharing. In the late 1800s, a woman from Guilford named Cynthia King decided to leave $1,000 for the town to purchase books. That's about $31,000 in today's money. But she had this stipulation that the town needed to build a suitable building to store and maintain those books. So the residents got together and built a Guilford Free Library for 300 bucks, or about 9,500 in today's money. Over 130 years later, it is still standing and being used. That is amazing. And I believe the library should be preserved and maintained as a pristine historic building in remembrance of a woman's gesture to her posterity and how a town united behind the idea. But in 1890, the residents of Guilford didn't apply for federal or state grants. They didn't pay tens of thousands of dollars for feasibility studies without stacking a single brick. They certainly didn't pay 30 years of interest borrowing for it. This expansion is not in an ideal location for at least half the town. Unless you live near Green River or on the upper half of Sweets Pond Road, you rarely go by the library. It's miles from Route 5 out a winding road with sharp turns. Though it's a nice drive in the warm months, it's far from essentially located or convenient for a large amount of Guilford residents. Aside from the location, the building lot is simply too small for an expansion. They couldn't build outward and keep it on one level, so they had to go up. This required an elevator, which increased the building costs substantially and added another maintenance item. The lot is so small that there's no place for a septic system. So they have to put in a 3,500 gallon holding tank and pay to pump it out regularly. That should have been the end of the discussion on any expansion at that location. The lot is just too small, it's inconvenient for many, and it would devalue the historical value of the library. But I would like the select board to answer two simple questions. Did the select board authorize the three-person meeting with the bond bank where those individuals discussed reallocating the $195,000 from the Algiers Water Project to the library? Or did an individual select board member act on their own? The second question. Did the select board authorize the town administrator to contact the town lawyer so the lawyer could draft the revised bond language to include the $195,000 of misplaced tax revenue in Article VII? Or did an individual select board member act on their own?
Jason, excuse me.
Hang on, hang on. These discussions were not had during an open public meeting, which is required by law. A select board act must act as a body and has authority only when acting as a whole. That's 1 VSA 172, if you would like to reference that. An individual member of the select board can act on behalf of the select board, but that needs to happen in an open meeting. There needs to be a motion about the topic, that there needs to be a second.
Jason, I'm not going to allow these, I'm not going to allow these questions because we are talking about the article and these are not germane to the article. This is between you.
This is exactly why, this is why I'm talking about this. If you, Rick, if you would just let me go two more seconds here.
This is not about Article VII.
No, it's not, Zon, this is between the town. They illegally did this. And if you would let me finish, I can show you. I'm just asking two simple questions here. That's it, just two simple questions.
Jason, this is.
I spelled them out, and now I'm speaking to you. Are you trying to prevent me from redressing my grievances here? I mean, what is the deal? I didn't even, this has been on here for two and a half minutes. I just listened to a slideshow for almost 25 minutes. I'm just explaining something that the whole town needs to hear. And you're trying to silence me again, why? I've got another 10 seconds here and I have this already solved, solved out. We wouldn't have had to have any more.
Okay, why don't you finish?
Now you and I are going back and forth.
Okay, why? But, but the, the select board.
Here it is. Okay, so let me finish, Rick. You're going to let me finish then?
Go ahead.
I'm very close to being done. I would have already been done if you didn't interrupt me. It would have been fine, I've been done already. A select board must act as a body and has authority only when acting as a whole. That's a Vermont statute. An individual member of the select board can act on behalf of the select board, but that needs to happen in an open meeting. There needs to be a motion about the topic that needs to be seconded. There needs to be a discussion about the motion and it needs to be voted on. Only with a majority of that vote can an individual member of the select board act on behalf of the group. There was either a violation of the open meeting law and the select board met privately, or an individual select board member acted alone and violated 1 VSA 172. Either way, this is a serious. Either way, this is a serious problem, Rick. This is a real, serious problem. They are violating state statute.
Okay, all right, can.
Realizing now that 195,000 was inappropriate, inappropriately reallocated, it should therefore be removed from the article under consideration and resubmitted to the voters of Guilford. That $195,000 was moved illegally. There's proof it's removed.
Okay, Jason, can you stop for a minute? Jason, can you stop, please? First of all, you know, this is between you and the select board. The, 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 the select board has, has a ruling that there was, there was no violation. You know, to go over that now, you can take that up with the select board at the select board meeting. This is not, this is not a forum for that. We are talking about the Article VII. Okay, so, you know, if the select board wants to answer your, your questions, that's fine. But I don't, they're not obligated to in this, in this forum.
Jason, you agreed. 10 seconds, you'll be done.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Anna Klein, East Mountain Road. I just want to mention to Jason and to anyone else that's feeling upset about those particular issues that are connected to this, but are not exactly about what we're talking about tonight, that I'm trying to organize a conflict resolution meeting, or meetings, between the select board and anyone who's feeling upset about this, to try to work out some of these things and hopefully make communication better in the future. So if you want to email me, annajklein@gmail.com, or, you know, get in touch with me somehow. I would love to help to organize that. So just wanted to put that out there, because I know people are still thinking about it.
Any comment from the select board, or should we move on?
I think it would be fine for us to move ahead. We know these issues exist. I think, just as you've stated, Rick, that's not the real issue for this evening. We'll have to, the issues are between Jason and the select board. We can take those up at another time in public meetings as necessary.
Okay, next question. Connie Burton.
I'm sorry, I can't get my video to work.
Well, we can hear.
There it is, there it is. Okay, I have one question, or a couple of questions and a comment also. In the Guilford Free Library flyer that was used at their Saturday walk-around, I think they called it, it says in March of 2019 that a local consultant was retained to develop and submit the expansion proposal. Is there any way to be told who that local consultant was?
I can just answer that right now, Connie.
Wait, wait, wait. Let Connie finish, she's got.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
She's got more questions.
Okay, yeah, and the other was mostly a comment about the space that will be able to be used by town groups, et cetera. From what I'm hearing from a lot of people, it makes it sound like it's a really big space. But somewhere or other, I got the idea that it's only a space big enough for about a group of 10 or anything about that. Is that, which, which is true? Is it for large groups, or is it really a space that can only accommodate about 10?
Should I answer now, Rick?
Kelly Young has her hand up. Is she someone who can answer that or not?
No, Kelly has a question.
Okay, all right, go ahead. You can answer.
Yeah, the first, first question, Connie, is the consultant who was hired is Isaac Wagner. And he spoke earlier, when we had a question about the design and about environmental features of the design. And so he was paid for from the planning grant. So he was hired as the consultant to help us with the planning grant. And that includes the design, okay? So that was your first question, I think. So you saw him and you heard him as he spoke tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and now your second question about the space, and Kathy Wilkin, please chime in if you need to. My understanding is the new room, which is, which we're thinking of as an activities room, so it'd be like a multi-use room. It is a space that a group can meet after hours. I don't know the actual size. I'm thinking it might be more like 15 adults. So you're right, not great big space, but certainly a heck of a lot bigger than we have now. You know, we could comfortably have a group of maybe five adults sitting in a circle right now. Does that answer your question, your second question?
Yes, and I think that's a really important thing to point out, because I didn't see anything. I think in one of the write-ups, it said something about a fairly modest size.
Yeah.
But I just don't want people to feel that, you know, it's a big place where we could have big, you know, big community gatherings.
Well, what, what I do want to add to that is we are partners, the Guilford Town of Guilford is a partner with Broadbrook Community Center, and the library has partnered with, before it was Community Center, with The Grange, and now the Community Center for years. So for years, the library, when we needed a large group, which once upon a time was the Halloween celebration, when we held it inside, and that was more than 100 people, but that picture that I showed of the Backroad Stories, we had several of those pre-pandemic there at the Broadbrook Community Center. So that would be the place for a large group, so you know, 25 and up, or 20 and up. So that kind of space will exist, and we plan to use and look forward to using. So the modest means not 25 or 50, but more like 15-ish.
Okay, Isaac, you had your hand up. You want to, did you want to address this? And then it looks like Kathy.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, it's, the room itself is 440 square feet, the community rooms. So, so you can, how many people you can spit in there, fit in there is sort of a personal preference on how many, how tight you want it to be. So it's a 440 square foot room. It has an attached 100 square foot kitchen and 100 square foot bathroom, and about a 200 square foot vestibule entryway. So it's about 900 square feet of community space that's available. So hopefully that answers some question for you.
Okay.
If I can just quickly say also that I am concerned about the cost. And I, you know, I know, and I, everybody realizes that at this day and age, you know, costs of construction and, and excavation and all that is just, it's just increasing day by day by day. So maybe what you might think, when you might think you have all the funds of, that you need to do the entire project and it gets started, you know, even as you're doing the project, costs will really be, hopefully, they won't be still skyrocketing, but they might be. And I think that's an important consideration.
We have thought about that and the capital campaign. We already have it in the plans for any cost overruns. And we know there will be. It goes without saying, we just know there will be. That will be part of the campaign to build in extra, you know, extra funds to cover cost overruns.
You know, 10% was one of the figures used, but with the way costs are going up now, 10% is not going to go very far.
It's true. It's true, and we're very mindful of that. It's true.
Okay, Kelly Young.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, are you, I can hear you.
Great, thank you for having this forum, first of all. So my concern, I mean, I think there, you could talk about lots of different parts of this, and I'm sure that many people in the community are, maybe have concerns or are excited about different things. And I know that the, the needs of the community are always changing, and maybe this is something we, people who are actively in the library on a more consistent basis than I am, have much more understanding of why we need this. But my question goes towards the, like, what it's going to look like. Is there some place that we can look at, like, the plans and, like, expected drawings of, of what this is going to look like? That's really what my question goes to. Thank you.
I can answer that. Yes, Kelly, on the Guilford Free Library website, there are lots of drawings that you can access. And so that's my immediate answer. Isaac, do you want to say anything else in addition to that?
I just briefly, and I think John can also speak to it as well. We're roughly halfway through a design process. We're, we're calling it the 60% design set. And that, that usually means you've, you've tackled some of your bigger issues, but there's a fair amount of small issues to, to work, still work, continue to work through, which we've basically stopped working through until we, you know, you know, get through this process. But ultimately, there's going to be some changes, and we're already, we've already started to think about some of the changes we've heard from the community, particularly on how it looks from the outside. And, and I think we'll continue to listen to people and make changes in that respect.
Carrie Bibby.
Hi there. I'm just wondering if someone can help me understand the, the need for a kitchen and what that would be, like, in terms of how, I mean, what does the kitchen look like? I know for myself, a kitchen rehaul would be fairly expensive. So I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind needing a kitchen in the library. And I'm sorry if it's already been addressed, because I was a little late. Thank you.
John, you're on the design team. Do you want to speak to that, John?
Yeah, sure. The kitchen is more properly called a kitchenette. It has a sink and a refrigerator and some cabinets. This is primarily for the staff and volunteers at the library, which right now have to use the bathroom for any of their food preparation, which is less than ideal. And then it also.
What do you?
The, the kitchenette will also be outside of the activity room. And so if it can be used for people that, that have an event in the activity room that, that is going to use some kind of food or drink, and, and you can use that for cleaning up or for storage and stuff, so.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
A quick question, Johnson. So are you saying that there's no stove in the kitchen?
Right, yeah, there's no stove. It's just gonna, I think there'll be a microwave and a sink and a refrigerator. Yeah, and I'm not sure what size the fridge is. But I think we haven't fully specked that out.
Okay, next question. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. I just can't find my hand to raise.
Oh, okay, who's this?
This is.
Jody Hauser.
Yeah, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm like.
Yeah, Jody, we can, we can hear you and see you now.
Okay, just, just, I just want to say that I live off grid, and I have to tether my phone for internet. And I went to school during the time before, it was, I think we had 3G here. And the library actually really assisted me in going to school online. It was an online certification. It is what my profession is now, which is a school librarian. And I could not have done it without the library. And I do have to say that when I was sitting there, I often had to beg, very graciously, they allowed me, but I begged to stay after hours, and I was able to get my teacher license, my library certification that was an endorsement on my license. So it, there are people in town who don't, I still don't have great internet. I'm surprised you can see me and hear me. So it is really important that the library has those resources. And, and it would have been even better if I could have been there during times when the library was active. I chose not to because it was so crowded. But it also led me to become, as for transparency, a friend of the library, so I'm also on that committee. And I just wanted to just reference the $2,900 grant that was probably listed. I think, Dan, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. But that was probably just all grants we wrote to, to, to fund summer camp, where all kids from Guilford go for free. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, next question, comment?
Rick, I have something to say if it's appropriate time, if there are no more questions.
Yeah, we're at an hour, but sure. Are there any more questions, comments? All right, then go ahead, Laura, and then we'll close.
Okay, I, I want to speak to that idea and the belief that Guilford Free Library is our public library, is an asset to the town. And Tucker, my husband, remembered this morning the story, and this is, it really brought it home to me. So we were new parents. We had a one-year-old who's now 37. So 36 years ago, we were going to buy our first house. And we were a nervous wreck and had always loved Guilford. We'd lived in Brattleboro for a number of years. And so we came out here and decided just to drive out here and see what we thought. And then we found a house for sale, the one that we're in now, but we couldn't decide. We're like, is this a really good idea? And we happened to come on a Saturday. The library happened to be open. And so we went into the library. Marian, the librarian, was the librarian at that time. And she was so incredibly welcoming and friendly and talked to us about Guilford. And I think it's just a, and we heard and listened to what she said, that yes, this is a wonderful town to live. And then indeed, as you know, we then bought the house and moved in. But it, it's, it really drives home in my mind that libraries are, they're so much more than books. It's really a place to get information. It's a place to meet people. And one other quick story is that a trustee, Sandra, told me that so many years ago, when they first moved here, and she had a little one, she and Scott had a little one, Tenzin, and she'd been given a, I hope to tell the story right, Sandra, got a present. It was a gift certificate for Amazon, and Sandra had no idea what Amazon was. And Sandra went to the library, and Crystal, the assistant librarian at the time, went to the library computer and showed Sandra what is Amazon and how do you use this gift certificate? So I just think they're really great stories of how libraries are assets. Public libraries are assets for all. And that's what we believe Guilford Free Library is. And if this vote should pass, it'll just, it'll enable us to meet more needs and, and also position us for the future. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a quick comment?
Who's this?
Mary Ann Parrott.
Oh, sure, Mary Ann, go ahead.
Thank you. We have a granddaughter, Judy and I, who just turned 16. And when she was under one, we used to take care of her for two or three days a week, because her mother's a schoolteacher. And if I couldn't go to the library and connect with, when most of the women were 30 or 40 years younger than I was, and they would just welcome me into their story hour group and tell me about other things for little, little ones. And over the years, those same women will see me on the street in Brattleboro, and they'll shout across, "Hey, Mamu, how's Maggie?" And I felt like, of course, I didn't belong in that group, but I did belong in that group, and it was an enormous help, taking care of that little girl. And she has memories of when she was three continuing to go there. So thank you.
Okay, Tammy has her hand up. Tammy Sargent.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment that some of us, no one is against having a library. We all love having the library. It's more that this vote that we're voting on is not just really about the $205,000 to take out on a bond and reallocating the $195,000. It's about the additional funds that comes out of our capital budget to pay for this. We're looking at a minimum three-quarters of a million dollars of our tax dollars investing in this. And to upkeep the library that we already have in place is not, never going to cost us that much money, I wouldn't think. It sounds like the library is in, in good condition. So I don't want people to think that me and. So I don't want people to think that, me anyway, I'm not anti-library. I love the library. I love what they provide. I just think that this amount of money for the addition and for how much improvement it is, is really what we're talking about. It's not whether or not we love the library. We all love the library. That was it.
Okay, Dan Collet, then Connie Burton.
I'd just like to reiterate what Tammy just said, you know, particularly, I think that the library brings tremendous value to the service. But, you know, the data coming from the Vermont Library Statistics shows that only 32% of the town people are actually registered borrowers. And if you look at the utilization for those, it's only 3.3 visits per year. So that, you know, the large capital amount coming from taxpayers just seems to me a little excessive for the scope of its use. Thank you for the time.
Connie.
Yeah, I also wanted to reiterate what Tammy said and just pose the question. If this doesn't pass, is there a Plan B?
Who'd like to answer that?
Well, I think what I would say is there's not a Plan B. If it doesn't pass, the trustees and friends will meet, and we'll talk about it, and we'll think about it, and decide what to do.
Thank you.
John Shaw.
Hi. I just wanted to talk about the usage of the library, because I think people have an idea that with the rise of the internet, that the library is not getting used very much. And actually, over the past decade, the library usage has increased dramatically. And so what we're doing is we're responding to the inability of the current library to meet the need that is there right now. So for instance, the library circulation went up from 2,800 up to 5,500 over the last decade. And library visits went from 2,600 to 4,300 per year. The total number of borrowers is up 45% from 449 to 649. And so there are just a lot of, I think, I think people get an idea that the library is not being used because they're not using it themselves, and if they drive by, they might see one or two cars. But the library actually is getting quite a lot of use. I think it averages out to, I don't have the number in front of me, but I think it's 40-something visitors per day that the library is open. So, and right now, the library, the size of the library is about one-quarter of the average size of a library for towns of our size. And the amount of books that we can fit into our library is about 1/3 of the average amount of books per person, per population that towns of our size have. So it's not a made-up need. It's a real need. Our library is tiny, and it's getting a lot of use. And so it's just bursting at the seams. So.
Okay, Jamie Durham.
It's Jethro.
Okay, Jethro.
It's just Jethro on Johnson Pasture. I just wanted to say that I just, I really appreciate all the effort everyone's doing with putting together all this work for raising the money, and I just think that it would be a really valuable asset with expanding the library. And it would create spaces for families and for, and it would really help the town in, not just, it's an asset as it is, but as, with an expansion, it would really, I think, would really benefit our town. Yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I don't know how to do it.
Oh, this, this Pat?
It is. Can you hear me?
Yeah, just go ahead. We can hear you.
Well, I have been a volunteer for Tuesdays for probably the last 10 years. And I can tell you that the number of books that come in from all over the state are amazing. We serve so many people. It is amazing. I'm too emotional. I'm sorry. It's a great little place, and we're doing a wonderful job, and they need more space. The bookshelves are overflowing, and there's no space for meetings and things like that. So I'm just, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, well, I want to thank everyone for attending and for speaking and listening, and everybody should get out and vote. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
And I want to thank everyone for coming, the trustees and the friends. We all appreciate everyone's time and your thoughtful questions. And please, if you haven't voted yet and you just want more information, stop at the library, call the library, and go to our website. And we would really like to answer your questions, so please seek us out. Thank you very much.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Night.